Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Harriston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Silawski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Seicho Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waguspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spazato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Your honor, we have a quorum present.
Please remain, please stand and please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered after the pledge. Alderman Spazato.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Pastor John Hannah of the New Life Covenants Church Southeast.
I haven't said anything yet. So God, we come today and we come to pray for our city. We come today and we come to pray for our mayor. We pray, God, that you would give her the spirit of discernment and continue to allow her to operate in a spirit of wisdom. We cover her circle, her surrounding, and everything that involves her. We pray for every elected official, that they would keep a servant's heart and know that they've been called and elected to serve this city. We pray for every ward, every block, every school, every teacher, every police officer, every fireman, every public service, and every business. We ask God that you would blanket this city with love and that your will be done in this city. We also pray, God, for those that are poor and those that need assistance. God, please open every window and every door to serve the poor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We will now begin the public comment period.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining for each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for automatic review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember this is a forum for public comments and not questions. The first speaker is Mr. Stanley Smith.
My name, my name is Stanley Smith, and I am a commercial artist. I live and work in Chicago. I'm also active in the interfaith community. In Chicago politics, we are sometimes surprised and seldom delighted. But I had the occasion to be both surprised and delighted in the first week of our new mayor Lori Lightfoot's tenure, when she unexpectedly, to me, showed up at the annual iftar dinner at the downtown Islamic Center to help celebrate the season of Ramadan with us. This is the first time in 10 years that I have been, that I've been attending the dinner that we have had the honor of such a guest. The mayor stated in her State of the City speech that she campaigned on being engaged with the city and to address the topic of crime. Some years ago, at another interfaith event, a panel was assembled of interfaith leaders to address this very topic, crime and violence. A guest asked the panel, how, if we had won the bid to host the Olympics, would we have addressed the problem of crime? Reverend Brazier from the Apostolic Church of God answered this question by saying that if the city had won the bid for the Olympics, there would have been a civic will to close down crime in the city. I was so struck by that. We have heard similar sentiments in this chamber about closing down crime and confronting crime and violence with more aggressive measures. And at first glance, this sounds pretty good. But Mayor Lightfoot has stated that crime is not a problem for the police alone to solve. We all need to be engaged and work together. And what is working together and being civically engaged? In most communities, this means being involved in a faith-based organization. This is true both locally and nationally. Currently, I'm coordinating a series of contemplating peace labyrinth walks in partnership with the Midwest Buddhist Temple. I am also inviting congregations from churches, synagogues, and mosques to participate in a citywide interfaith open house in 2020 in partnership with the Chicago Architecture Center. The economic benefits provided by faith-based groups, including social services, cultural enrichment, plus educational and emotional support services nationally, would constitute the world's 15th largest economy if it was a standalone entity. But thanks to our new mayor, none of us have to stand alone because we can indeed work together. I encourage all the council members to look to your faith-based groups in your neighborhood and consider reaching out to them in the new year. We have been engaged by the new mayor, and we want to be engaged with you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next speaker is Ms. Sandy Schneller.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Sandy Schneller. I was lucky enough to be selected through this new and hopefully short-lived random selection process. Everyone should have a voice. Madam Mayor, I know that you and your committee personnel have been arduously strategically planning on the $838 million budget shortfall. You have received most likely a plethora of suggestions, but you haven't received this brilliant plan that I have. It's a plan to offset some of the $838 million budget shortfall that will not include the taxpayers. The plan will speak to jobs, health and fitness, transportation collaborations with the CTA and RTA. It will speak to decreasing traffic congestion through incentives and promote a clean environment. Again, my name is Sandy Schneller. If you want to hear more about this, you can have your people call me at 312-953-3503. I have a public number, so again, that is 312-953-3503. You will be remiss if you do not contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneller. The next speaker is Pastor Arthur Sutton.
Great and wonderful morning to you, all council members, especially my wonderful and beautiful mayor, who I shall root for eternally. I'm Pastor Sutton. I'm glad to finally get here today in this particular room with this forum so that some things can be addressed for our seniors. There are things that are going on in buildings southeast, west, and north, where we're suffering with roaches, mice, unbearably high electric bills. Some have air conditioners, some don't. Ceiling fans that are needed are not received. Due to everything in our units being powered electrically and not having any security to keep us safe on our comings, ins, and goings outs. Now, on top of all these difficulties, we have a manager who consistently, most of these buildings, we have managers who consistently intimidate residents to prevent them from working together to solve these issues. We have residents living in fear. Seniors are scared to talk or say what's going on for fear of retaliation. I encourage and offer you, my sweet sister, my mayor, to come out to Collins Apartments, to other HUD buildings and CHA buildings, Jane Adams, and see what's going on. Why aren't the managers meeting the needs of the seniors? We seniors are not retired. We want to roll up our sleeves and work together to help you, Madam Lori, because that's what I was on board with when I was at your inauguration. How you talked about rolling up your sleeves, that's my very idea, and it's also my life's faithful work, that we work together on one accord. Because if we don't, we're gonna lose Chicago. Not just seniors, who the children of today are standing on our shoulders, but the children who are coming up. There are schools being torn down. I have heard and witnessed our manager use scare tactics on some of the tenants to keep them from expressing concerns. Many residents have been forced to accept dehumanizing conditions. Now, because if they speak out, they will be faced with retaliation or be evicted, they're scared and they're just sitting cowed down. We're already free. Anybody who's talking about slavery is a slave in their own mind. God already made us free. We're to continue to work together to initiate this freedom and the help that we know is available. But we do need someone to come out over us to help enhance this. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Sutton. The next speaker is Laura Brown. The next speaker is Laura Brown.
Thank you, ma'am, for your impassioned statement, and we'll be reaching out to you to understand better what the challenges are in the properties.
Hi, my name is Laura Brown. Hi, everyone. My name is Laura Brown. I live and work in Chicago, and Michelle Smith is my alderman. I'm here today to talk about how horse carriages have no place in Chicago in 2019. They are a public safety hazard and profoundly unnecessary. Chicagoans don't need or want these dangerous relics of a bygone era on our streets, and there are wealth of other more worthy activities for tourists in our vibrant city. Horses are sensitive and skittish animals. Animals and people have been seriously hurt and even killed when horses have become spooked and run amok. There were 334 violations in 2017 alone in Chicago and a continual stream of clear violations since. In 2018, there were more than 30 documented violations. Nearly all businesses would be shut down if they behaved in a similar fashion. Even as recent as in the past few weeks, a horse with terrible open sores was found and had to be removed off the streets. Every time I have been downtown in my free time from work enjoying the city, I have witnessed clear violations of the law. Last summer, I personally witnessed and filmed a carriage horse working in a thunder and lightning storm in the driving rain on Michigan Avenue. Understandably, our city does not have the time nor the resources to enforce the laws on the books, but we do have the resources to make common sense choice and ban horse carriages in Chicago. In addition to that, with my last minute, I would like to speak on behalf of attorney Adam Zeblin, who is here today. He's the former Assistant State's Attorney, and on August 25th, he saw that all horses were denied water and every carriage was prohibited on the streets, including the owner of Chicago's horse and carriage was using streets that were not permitted to be used. He laughed at us and said, no one will ever do anything about it. What strikes me most is the image of a horse whose tail was braided and tied to the harness. At first, he thought it was an accident, but then the driver said, it's so it doesn't defecate on itself, but he did not use the word "defecate." These are the type of people entrusted with the care of these horses and public safety in our city. Now, I don't know if tying a horse's tail is illegal, but it's certainly inhumane as it prevents the horse from swatting its tail to get flies off its legs and feet. This is an inhumane practice, and it needs to be allowed to go to a vote. What is going to take, what is, is it going to take for this legislature body to ban this archaic and dangerous practice? A dead horse on Michigan Avenue and the public outrage associated with it? Or tourists being sent to the hospital? If you're sick of our letters, emails, and phone calls, then pass the ban, because we are only growing in numbers and we will eventually get this ban enacted. You need to ask yourself, are you going to be on the humane or inhumane side of history in Chicago? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. The next speaker is May Toy.
Hello. My name is May Toy. I'm president of Skinner Park Advisory Council, and I'm here today to speak to you about our knee in our neighborhood. Skinner Park is located in the West Loop, and as you know, the city annexed our community as to be part of downtown. The problem is, you know, we're still a neighborhood that is in knee, because it was called downtown for the purposes of development, but we still have basic needs in terms of green space and schools that our community has been struggling for and still lack. 10 years ago, I did analysis, okay? I've been a president of our advisory council for 20 years. When I became a president, at that time, Skinner Park served our community. It met the needs of our community. 10 years ago, based on the census, I did another analysis, and it says that our neighborhood lacked the 33 acres of green space to serve our community at that time. Now, another 10 years has passed. I'm sure with the new census, it will show that with all the added development, the city council has approved for our community, we will lack hardly over 50 acres in green space just in our West Loop neighborhood, not in the near West Side community area, just in the West Loop. So here, I'm saying to you, okay? And I'm glad that, I think there was news reports that says that you did not support selling off city assets. So I'm here to say to you that we need to expand Skinner Park into the old, the current, actually, police training academy, which is directly across the street to fulfill the needs of our community. I propose repurposing the building to serve as a community center and fieldhouse, to serve as a community. Okay? And just so everybody understands, not everybody's rich in the West Loop. Directly across from the academy is a hut housing project. A block away, you know, are million dollar homes. This is the diversity of the West Loop that I serve as president of Skinner Park Advisory Council. Everybody's equal in a public park, you know? And you need to understand that when you talk about our West Loop, there's a gamut of people across all ages, all economic needs, that live in the West Loop. Okay? It's not about all these rich people living in all these million dollar condos that are being built. We did not support the expansion of the downtown destination for our community, for our residents, but that was put on us, and you know what? We live with it. But you know what? The city needs to also take into account our needs as a community. We lack a high school. 10 years ago, I collected petition signatures. I brought people in for budget hearings to talk about the fact that we did not have a neighborhood high school.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Your time has expired.
Thank you. We need a neighborhood high school.
The next speaker is Ms. Ellen Geisherton.
Good morning, mayor and aldermen. My name is Ellen Gutiantev. I am the board president of the Tian East Ontario Building or Ontario Place Association. I'm also an attorney, and I also teach real estate law, so I'm an agent professor of real estate law. This is actually my first time at the council, and until last night, we did not even know the procedure of coming and making a public comment. One of my board members are also there on the balcony somewhere. And today, I want to speak on behalf of the Ontario Place Association and the building that is 456 units and is one of the building that is listed in yesterday's Chicago Tribune article on proposed ordinance and deconversion issue. So I wanted to address the issue. Actually, on behalf of our association, we are here to oppose or to at least ask you, councilmen, to maybe postpone your decision on enacting your proposed, your proposed ordinance to increase the required vote to sell condominium property to 85%. While we understand that in principle, increasing your, increasing the percentage of affirmative vote to 85% will ensure that more owners are in agreement with its sale, this potential increase can have unintended devastating consequences on buildings of our size and profile. Investors who are targeting multiple downtown buildings for deconversion, including our building, are actively seeking to purchase units of the market to build the ownership in the building prior to the vote to ensure that they have a say in the vote. Even at 10 or 15% ownership, they can cause enormous distress to the building. They can increase assessments. They can take, pretty much take over the board, especially in the buildings that have high investment ownership and the voting generally is very low. So what would happen if they reach 15% mark, which is inevitable in light of the association's inability to stop them? They will put a building at a huge disadvantage because they will become, in essence, the only buyer in town. And therefore, your purpose that you're trying to achieve with your amendment as to prevent long-term residents from being kicked out of their residences will result in complete opposite effect, because those owners will be eventually kicked out, but they will be kicked out in a deconversion that is, in essence, a hostile takeover and, of course, at below market prices. So we are asking you to maybe push it back to committee and solicit more public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Geisherton, for your comments.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. That sounded, felt so good, I'll say it again. Madam Mayor, good morning. I want to first acknowledge the work that you and the clerk and others have done in looking at relieving and reorganizing the parking ticket structure and program. There's just one last step I would implore you to consider, and that is to repeal totally the Chicago city sticker tax. We're the only tax of the top 16 cities in America that has such a tax, the only one within this region. And so I would ask that that final step be done and that we begin to look at the other ways that can relieve the burden and increase the quality of life of people here in the city of Chicago. Increasing the quality of life with things such as, yesterday with Alderman Pat Dow, we opened the first dog park in Bronzeville, and we have two more coming. And with her support and Alderman King's support, we're transforming our neighborhoods to be more community-minded, to make Chicago the city, not just the city that's shining on the hill, but the city that also is concerned about the valley that is surrounded. Along those lines, there's one other piece that I'd like to speak with you about, and that's the funding regarding HIV and AIDS and the Black LGBTQ community on the South Side, our allies' community. In this budget process, I hope you will stress looking for parity and equity and addressing those issues. I know there's been some conversations around holding this money up and doing this. Look, this is about people's lives. In the Black community, HIV and AIDS, we are in a disproportionate proliferation of this. Looking for equity as far as economic opportunities, as far as providing, using the housing resources that are available, all of these things, but I ask you to not allow people to just play political games about people's lives. We've been there too long. We've given too much. We've suffered too long, and we have too much optimistic opportunity. Things that we can change, we can eliminate HIV and AIDS totally in this, in this city. We can eliminate it if we all, if we take the serious work at hand and not, and not get lost in political game playing. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace, for your comments. The next speaker is Ms. Audrey Fisher.
Hello. Dear Honorable Lightfoot and all city council members, may God bless you and each and every person attending here in their efforts to bring out the best Chicago we can be working together. I have no small task for you. I'm asking that the city of Chicago restores starlight over this city. Light pollution is a global problem. Chicago remains the poster child for light pollution, in spite of thousands and thousands of documents from scientists of all different fields agreeing on a consensus that our light pollution will increase the health risk to people, including breast, prostate cancer, colon cancer, mood disorders, including depression, aggression, and suicides. I believe that there is no coincidence that Chicago remains one of the most violent cities in the United States, but also has the most light pollution. Recently, a matter of couple weeks ago, Lincoln Park Zoo worked together with Professor Shimer from Northeastern University and two other universities in other states to study the effect of Chicago's light pollution on wildlife and found it is very detrimental. Other studies agree that it will even lessen the immune system of birds to make West Nile virus be able to go almost twice as contagious. And now, I live in the Beverly area, we found a rabid bat. Light pollution is linked to weakened immune systems. Please, there are thousands of documents and reasons as to why we need to minimize light pollution. And also, the issue is that we are currently installing one of the largest installation of LED streetlights in the world, having the opportunity to restore starlight, but instead, Chicago's latest request for vendors eliminates the very technology that could do this. AMA strongly recommends that we minimize or eliminate blue-rich street wavelength in our streetlights, and yet, that's what we're going, that's what we're doing. Please, we are the city that has changed the course of the river. We can do anything. This is an issue that affects people, every single person in this life, even the unborn and the third trimester. I am begging you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Fisher. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Ms. Ernestine Stanberry.
Good morning, good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and councilmen and women. My name is Ernestine Wendellin Means-Stanberry. I'm a descendant of Russell Means. He's the deceased revolutionist Indian. And I'm also president of the International Pro-Life Federation. I'm a member of UNIA, Local 401, Marcus Garvey Institute. I'm a member of National Black Wall Street and proud to say ex-member of NCOWRA. So now, I came in with the African-American flag. I am very proud to carry the flag. I know I witnessed here about two summers ago, different national I know I witnessed here about two summers ago, different nationalities coming into Chicago and having ceremonies down at the Daily Center. Actually, I was there, and they had a flag incorporation. It's the white and red flag. What country that was, I cannot remember, but see, the African Republic flag has been legal since August 13, 1920. Four weeks of debate in New York City, Madison Square Garden. Honorable Marcus Garvey. And so, you know, you probably have gotten some posts from me. I know when you were in, I was kind of so happy that Fred Winkle didn't win. I said, okay, you know. So I sent you a post saying, raise the African-American flag. And there was a little confusion there because I had President Trump in on this because I'm also a Trump reporter, supporter. And so you raised the gay and lesbian flag, but I'm trying to get the African-American flag acknowledged, especially when you go to the Michigan Avenue Parade of Flags, it's not there, and it's been legal since August 13, 1920. I wanted to carry it because this man behind me took it from me, and that's something that I don't like because it happened to a friend of mine who has a dollar store. The police told her to take the flag down. Now, everybody has a flag up here, every nationality, the Jamaicans, I mean, just everybody got their flag. Now, this is the African Republic flag. It represents Negroes all over the world, whoever you are, whatever you are in the United States. We just need this flag raised. I'm with reparations groups. Now, we are asking for reparations insofar as our City Council people starting their reparations movement because really and truly, way back when Bush was on, it was one of the issues with the federal government, reparations. So the reparations movement could just start, but the simple thing is him not taking my flag. I'd like to hold my flag standing here because, you know, just like you got the Chicago flag, you got the American flag, and that's the culture of my heritage. I spoke Kalabai, 1995. I was baptized by the Holy Spirit. I had abortions. I end up repenting. You know what the Lord showed me in my heritage language?
Thank you, Ms. Stanberry, for your comments. The next speaker is Ms. Doris Lewis.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, and good morning to this body. My name is Doris Lewis. And I'm here in support of the resolution on reparations. In addition, in addition to that, I am a Chicago teacher and counselor, and I have some serious concerns about the racial disparity within the Chicago Board of Education. Black children, black children make up 36% of the CPS population. Black employees, teachers, make up only 20%. White students represent 10% in this system, and the white teachers are 50%. That is a gross, that is a gross disparity. The Chicago Teachers Union is talking about hiring new counselors, new nurses. Out of those new counselors and new nurses, we need more Black nurses, we need more Black counselors, we need more Black physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech therapists across the board. Study after study shows that if a Black student has one Black teacher, his or her chances of going on to college is 15%. If they have two Black teachers, their chances of going on to college goes up to 30%. This cannot continue in this system, and I want this body, I want this body to seriously think about this resolution as it goes through the process, and I'm hoping that this resolution, if not before, we can end this racial disparity within the city of Chicago Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lewis. The next speaker is Mr. Maurice Kimbrough. The next speaker is Mr. Maurice Kimbrough.
Good morning to all the Councilmembers, Aldermen, and the Honorable Mayor Lightfoot. My name is Maurice Kimbrough. I am a 27th Ward resident and also a business owner. I'm here today to talk about the PMD. The businesses and the Westside residents do not want PMD reform. On the internet, your incoming Planning Commissioner Cox talks about neighborhood redevelopment, that plans should involve residents and businesses instead of city planners forcing ideas on the public. But that's not what's happening with the PMD reform. In the East section, there is 2 million square feet and 14 industrial properties. 10 of these property owners want the PMD repeal, four don't. The four represent 100,000 square feet, only 5% of the total 2 million. Are we not repealing the PMD for 5% of landowners? When Fulton Market PMD was repealed, four industrial companies also remained. They haven't been compromised by PMD repeal but are modernizing and reinvesting in the city. The same approach must occur in PMD East section next to Fulton Market. In January, the Council revised its transit orientation-oriented development policy to include adjacent to the CTA Ashland Bus, making the East section of the PMD available for the TOD. If you don't repeal the PMD, no TOD developments can occur here invalidating your policy. In the West PMD area, the city will lose monumental tax revenues by eliminating existing opportunities in five service businesses. The Planning Department idea of to eliminate these businesses is unprecedented in any PMD, and the department has provided no proof that these businesses have had a negative impact on the industrial companies. In fact, the idea of demodernizing the PMD against national trends punishes thousands of PMD employees and Westside residents who will lose critical services nearby. The vote today is about the mayor's pledge to end automatic prerogative. At the only city meeting on the revised proposal, the local Alderman did not attend and did not send staff and did not hear from the majority of the residents opposed to the PMD reform. Now, Mayor Lightfoot, with all due respect, the question is yours. Will you allow one Alderman to decide the future of 800 acres, or will you stand by your pledge of proper oversight of zoning decisions? With Chicago experiencing financial crises, and the best way out of is through economic development and...
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Your time has expired. Thank you, everyone. The time allotted for the public comment period has expired.
Tribute to the late Michael Bauer. A resolution...
Please come to, please come to order. Please come to order. Madam Clerk.
A resolution from our Honorable Mayor Alderman Smith and Alderman Tunny. Whereas the members of this chamber were deeply saddened to learn of the death on August 29, 2019, at age 66, of Michael Bauer, a respected citizen of the city of Chicago and longtime activist who was instrumental in the election of dozens of local and national political leaders. And whereas Mr. Bauer was a passionate advocate for worthy causes and oppressed people with a specific focus on Holocaust education and LGBTQ issues. And whereas a son of two Holocaust survivors, raised in East Rogers Park and trained as a lawyer, Mr. Bauer made a lasting impact on Chicago politics and political institutions that was shaped by his commitment to equality. And whereas influenced by the AIDS epidemic, Mr. Bauer entered politics to direct attention to the needs of the gay community. And whereas in 1994, Mr. Bauer chaired a successful campaign for the state's first-elected, openly gay person, enabling Tom Chula become a county circuit court judge. And whereas Mr. Bauer was a pioneer in Holocaust history in 1998 with his participation in cultivating the first academic symposium of the Holocaust gay victims. And whereas in 2003, Mr. Bauer served as campaign co-chair and finance chair for Alderman Tom Tunny's campaign to become the first openly gay Alderman elected to the City Council. And whereas Mr. Bauer's significant contributions to the city of Chicago include his distinct presence in Chicago's Jewish community through its service as a co-chairman of the Illinois Holocaust and Genocide Commission. And whereas most recently, Mr. Bauer, serving as a chairman of her campaign, played a pivotal role in the election of our first openly gay mayor of the city of Chicago. And whereas Mr. Bauer gave generously his time to the community, including serving as a co-chair for various annual fundraisers for political and charitable organizations, including Citizen Action Illinois, American Jewish Committee and Impact, he also served on the Board of Directors for Lambda Legal Defense and Education, the Gay and Lesbian Victory Fund, and the Global AIDS Alliance. And whereas Mr. Bauer's lifelong achievements were honored by the American Civil Liberties Union with its John R. Hamel Award in 1998, the Independent Voters of Illinois Independent Precinct Organization with its Edwin Astor Special Service Award in 2002, the Hartz Foundation with its Jackson Service Award in 2003, Horizon's Community Services with its Human First Award in 2003, City PAC with its Scoop Jackson Pro-Israel Advocacy Award in 2003, Chicago House with its Spirit Award in 2004, and the Anti-Defamation League with its Abraham Lincoln Civil Rights Award in 2005. And whereas Mr. Bauer will be remembered as a masterful political advisor and activist who pushed the boundaries of representation and equality while providing future generations with expectation of diverse leadership. And whereas Mr. Bauer has survived by his beloved husband of 37 years, Roger Simon, his mother, Teyma Bauer, and his brother, Jerry Bauer, many nieces and nephews, and countless admirers and friends. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and the members of the City Council of the city of Chicago, assemble this 18th day of September 2019, do hereby honor the life, legacy, and memory of our friend, Michael Bauer, and extend our heartfelt condolences to his family. And be it further resolved that suitable copies of this resolution be presented to the family of Michael Bauer as a sign of our honor, gratitude, and utmost respect.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Hairston?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. You know, you never know what you're going to encounter each day. I did not learn until this morning that Michael had passed. And so, Roger, I want to say to you my deepest condolences, but I loved Michael to death. It's been a 20-something-year friendship that we have, going back to our days at IVI, IPO, and Lois and Alan Dobree. The anniversary of Clarence Darrow, where we each meet at the Clarence Darrow Bridge to wait for him to come back and tell us about the afterlife, is something that I will miss, and it will be very difficult to do it next year. But one of the bright spots about that is that Michael and I would always take a picture together, and one of my favorite pictures of us sits in my office every day. Madam Mayor, I just want you to know that the only time that Michael did not take my call, he called me back and he said I was having dinner with the mayor. He will truly be missed. Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Thank you. This is a sad moment and remembrance for many, many people who have known Michael throughout his professional career. I am proud to say that he was a long-term resident of our ward, and it is hard to honor a guy who comes from a family that had nothing, who were refugees to this country after the Second World War, having lost their entire family in the Holocaust, a hard thing to imagine, who raised their children at the back of the store and then over the store and instilled them the value that you must make a difference in the world. Michael took that burning lesson from his parents and turned it into light for every cause that he supported and was a tremendous leader in realizing that every constituency needs power, and the way to get power is to organize. For that, I truly admire him, his work. But what I most admire about Michael is his relationship with his husband, Roger. I've often saw them in our neighborhood, not engaging in politics, but just engaging in love and companionship. And that is the real lesson that I have always learned from Michael, that no matter how busy your day or how committed to your cause, truly the most important thing in your life is to have the support of a loving spouse and a loving family. And he has been a great inspiration to me. All the best, Roger. Many condolences.
Alderman Kappelman?
Thank you. I too stand in support of this resolution. Actually, Alderman, Michelle Smith took the words right out of my mouth. When I think of Michael, I always think of Roger. Michael just spoke over and over and over again about his deep love for you, and I think for the LGBT community, that's so important. It certainly strengthened my relationship with my husband, with both you and Michael being so open about your relationship. I think it helped the city of Chicago to understand the deep love that we can have for one another. You paved the way for many people, so I just owe my thanks to both you and Michael. Thank you.
Alderman Madonaro?
Thank you, Madam President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution. I met Michael during my years as a County Commissioner. I always remember him as being very energetic, very happy. I never saw him upset about anything, and I never met anybody in my life that loved politics as much as he did. All of us get to a point that we say we are going to move on, but Michael always loved politics all the way to the end of his life. So I'm going to miss him, and I'm so grateful that you are going to be here, always bringing his memories so that we never forget him. Thank you so much.
Alderman Burnett?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution. I've known Michael my whole automatic career and before that, working on other campaigns. He was always a gentleman, always smiling, very committed for what he believed in, committed to what he believed in, and committed to the people that he supported. He was just a great guy, and he always was sharp. Michael always dressed sharp. I mean, he always looked like a million dollars, and we're going to miss him. He always brought a lot of happiness to the council in Springfield and Washington, everywhere that he went. My condolences to you.
Alderman Ostrom?
Thank you, Madam President. Roger, on behalf of my wife and I, Peggy, our deepest condolences. Alderman Smith brought up your love. Every time we saw Michael, you guys were together, always with a smile. If you are friends with Roger and Michael, every Christmas, you get a special Christmas card, which always was from fun places and showed their love. Michael was an energetic, committed ally, and if he was with you, he was with you. And if he was against you, he would smile and walk up and tell you he was against you, and he would bring it. But he did so to try to come up with what's good public policy and what's right, and he stood by his friends, and he enjoyed the battle. And politics can be rough and tumble, but he brought a spirit to it. If you look at the advances over the last 20 years with human rights and LGBT rights in our state, in our city, in our country, Michael was always in the middle of that, and he was always a part of advancing that and talking to people about who he was and the policies and how they affected people that couldn't be there to speak for them. He was their voice. He was their voice, and he was their ally, and he will be deeply remembered.
Thank you. Alderman Tunnies?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm reading the resolution, and I think you and I have something in common with Mike, not just the years that we knew him, but he was a campaign finance chair, co-chair for my first aldermanic candidate, successful candidacy, and as the first openly gay mayor. He was so proud of you and supported you from day one. We had a great service. It was long. I think there was every one of almost every political person, from Senator Durbin all the way down to Lowly Alderman of the 44th Board, but we all shared this common love of Mike and Roger. And I was amazed at the service at the nieces, how articulate they were about their uncle, uncles, I should say, because both sides spoke so eloquently of their love for Michael. I learned a little bit, a lot about his family history, to realize that his parents lost everybody in the Holocaust, you know, that they came to America, father was a shopkeeper, if I believe. I think that's some of Mike's entrepreneurship, but we've shared so many laughs and tears together. He's going to be missed, but I want to tell you that I think he was sane, or insane, for that matter, because he had Roger at home, because Roger kind of stayed out of the politics. But I think he kept Michael balanced, and loved and cherished, and I know with his you're working for the airlines, I know you spend a lot of time traveling, but Chicago has always been your home, and Lakeview, and Lincoln Park, and our love and affection for the city is for you, Roger, because I know this is the time where everyone's sending their condolences, but there'll be some lonely times, and I know that you know you have friends, a lot of friends, and especially our friendship, both yours and ours, and Michael's will endure for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Riley?
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Michael Bauer was a friend and someone I'll miss very much. When we lost Michael, Chicago lost a fantastic civic leader. My experience with Michael over the last 20 years was that he was always very direct, very honest, fiercely loyal, and someone you definitely want on your team and not on the other. And he was always a really fountain of great advice for me, and when I was in a tough spot in my first term, I'd turn to Michael for advice, and he always was very direct and honest, and would tell me if I was making a mistake. The one bit of advice I didn't take from Michael Bauer was when I went and met with him, telling him I was exploring a run for Alderman. He told me I was crazy and that I shouldn't run, and I did it anyway, and afterwards, he came and saw me, said, "Well, I'm glad you didn't take my advice. I've got a lot more advice for you the next four years," and that's what he did. He helped guide me through my first term in office, and so I miss him terribly, for all the reasons my colleagues mentioned, and I'm really sorry, Roger, for your loss. He's a tremendous person who will be missed for a very long time.
I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak on this resolution. Michael was my dear friend and confidant. I will always love him dearly. He really was one of a kind. He was a passionate human rights advocate and a brilliant political activist. It is because of Michael that I am here today. As many of you know and you heard, Michael was the son of two Holocaust survivors, both of whom were the sole survivors of their families. Michael always said that one of the events that greatly shaped his life was something that ended seven years before he was born, and to know Michael was to know how true that was. The reality of the Holocaust and the horror and pain and tragedy that that caused his family was one of the singular animating forces in his political outlook and his activism. As Michael himself said many times, "If it happened, it can happen again, maybe not to Jews, but to another group." You saw and felt that urgency and passion, and how he fought to protect abortion rights, how he fought against AIDS, his support of Israel, and his work in Holocaust education, and most of all, and how he fought for the rights of the LGBTQ community, of which he was a proud out member. His determination to fight every vestige of racism and bigotry was also his way of carrying out his parents' legacy. At its core, his life was a fight for fairness and justice. But if there's anything that best captured Michael and who he was, it was seeing him with his beloved Roger. As Michael himself said, being with Roger was his way of showing people of what a gay couple looked like. It was also showed his zest for life and the joy he carried in everything he did and loved. Michael's truly an unforgettable person. Though he's physically gone, his legacy lives on in the countless individuals he supported, the young people he mentored, and his success in creating a city and county that was more fair, decent, and just. Roger, as I've told you, I will work tirelessly to make sure that Michael's legacy and memory live on. Thank you.
Alderman Mitchell?
Adoption of the resolution by a rising vote.
Thank you. We have other resolution? Alderman Mitchell? I'm sorry. Madam Clerk.
A resolution from or honor the mayor and Alderman Maldonado. Whereas the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month every year from September 15th through October 15th to recognize and celebrate the many contributions made by Hispanics and Latinos which have shaped our society and culture, built and strengthened our nation, and helped to make the United States a diverse, thriving, and vibrant democracy. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated in the United States for more than 30 years, the observance began in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson as one week celebration called Hispanic Heritage Week. In 1988, thanks in large part of the efforts of Illinois Senator Paul Simon, United States Congress passed, and President Ronald Reagan signed into law, public law, 100 to 402 designated in 31-day period beginning September 15th and ending on October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas September 15th was chosen as a starting point for an annual celebration honoring Americans of Hispanic descent, because it marks the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries. Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, and Belize celebrate their independence days on September 16th, September 18th, and September 21st, respectively. And whereas today, National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide at local festivals, art shows, conferences, community gatherings, and other events emphasizing the rich history, cultural, and traditions and myriad of accomplishments and contributions of Hispanic and Latino-Americans. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the United States military honors the 1.2 million Hispanic and Latino men and women who, over the course of our history, have answered the call to serve in our nation's armed forces. 61 people of Hispanic or Latino descent have been awarded the Medal of Honor, the highest United States military decoration awarded by Congress for bravery in combat. On September 2018, 136,000 Hispanic soldiers were serving in the United States Army alone, compromising 13.6% of its total armed force. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month has special meaning in Chicago, approximately 780,000 Chicago residents identify as Hispanic or Latino. Over 46% of Chicago Public School students identify as Hispanic or Latino. More than 9,000 Hispanic and Latino-Americans contribute to the educational mission of Chicago Public Schools as teachers, principals, and staff. Hispanic and Latino-owned businesses represent the fastest-growing segment of small businesses in the state of Illinois, contributing immeasurably to the well-being of our local economy. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month provides Chicagoans with the opportunity to reflect on our shared history as Americans and to celebrate the rich mosaic of people and cultures who worked together to build and defend our nation and contributed to the legacy of freedom and diversity that we hold dear to our heart. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor, members of the city council, the city of Chicago, assemble this 18th of September 2019, do hereby designate the 31st-day period beginning on September 15th and ending October 15th each year as Hispanic Heritage Month in Chicago, and encourage all Chicagoans to identify the contributions of Hispanic and Latino-Americans to the culture, identity, and economy of our great city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move adoption of the foregoing resolutions in the omnibus.
Do you move to temporarily suspend the rules?
I apologize. I move to temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Maldonado?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, President. Thank you so much for your leadership in supporting this resolution. Yes, it is indeed Hispanic Heritage Month. It is very interesting that during that month, between September 15th and October 15th, most of our Latin American countries also celebrate their respective independence days. And even though our census says we have 784,000 Latinos in the city of Chicago, those are just the ones that we can count. So I'm almost certain that we have many more than that. So thank you so much for recognizing the contribution of Latinos in the city of Chicago, Madam President, and I look forward for the comments of my colleagues as well. Thank you.
Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand to support this resolution. I'm proud to stand to help commemorate Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month has really become Chicago Heritage Month. Latinos have become an integral part of every facet of the city, our neighborhoods, our schools, as small business owners, and even government. Today is one of the best parts of Chicago. Celebrating Hispanic heritage is the same thing as celebrating Chicago. So I say, "Viva Chicago."
Alderman Raboyos?
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. We still have some squawks back there. This is a good day for us, and I want to thank you for moving this forward. I want to thank the Chairman of the Caucus to move this forward as well. But you know, remember this: we are Latinos, but we also need to be counted. Let's not forget the census and pass the word on to the community, because we all need to be counted. And until that happens, then we can probably say that we are Latinos and we want to be counted, because we're part of this community, we're part of this society, and we pay many taxes. So thank you, Madam Chairman.
Alderman Rosa?
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Thank you so much to yourself and Alderman Maldonado for bringing this forward. You know, I think it's important that we talk about what exactly does it mean to be Hispanic. See, Hispanic is not a race, and let's not go too far into the weeds about what exactly is a race, because we know that ultimately is a social construct. But in the context of the way that we talk about the law and race in the U.S. and the way that we conceptualize race, Hispanic is in reality a pan-ethnic group. So what that means is that you can be Black and Hispanic, you can be White and Hispanic, you can be Indigenous and Hispanic. What it means is that we have a shared culture and a shared tradition, one that was created by African slaves that were brought in chains but refused to be subjugated and continue to have a spirit, a spirit of celebration. And you hear that in salsa, you hear that in bomba, you hear that in merengue, you hear that in the music that Latinos all across Latin America play. What it means is that you have roots and ancestry in the Indigenous Taínos, or in the Indigenous Mexica, or the Indigenous Inca, people all across this grove that built great monoliths and had great religions and invented the zero. What it means is that you can be a great artist, like the artist known as Belcalis Marlenis Almanzar, otherwise known as Cardi B, and be one of the greatest artists that this country has ever known. So you know, truly, this is a great month to celebrate our Hispanic heritage. I'm so proud to have that Latino heritage, that Hispanic heritage, and I'm so proud that the city recognizes the importance of Latinos who make up a third of the city and who contribute so much in arts, in culture, in industry. So much of our sales tax revenue comes from Little Village that goes without saying we say it over and over again, but it should also be a reminder to certain individuals in the White House or in power that seek to divide us, that seek to deport us, that seek to put people in cages. We're here, we've been here, and we're here to stay. Thank you.
Alderman Rodriguez?
I'd like to rise and support whatever Carlos just said. No, and I want to just move on with that. I think you're exactly right, Carlos, and today we have a resolution that Alderman Sawyer and I are presenting that passed out of the Health and Human Relations Committee that speaks to the fact that we have a president who's xenophobic, who's racist, who's going after our community, and I'm proud that our council here today will stand up against that and pass this resolution. Thank you all a part of this council, both Latino, Black, and White, and other who are supporting our efforts. Thank you, Madam President.
I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak on this resolution. Chicago's Hispanic community is one of our city's oldest and most vibrant. You can see that in the 26th Street commercial corridor in Little Village, which is Chicago's second busiest shopping district after the magnificent mile. You can see it in our Hispanic students who are breaking new academic records year after year, and you can see it right here in our city council chamber with our city clerk and many, many Hispanic aldermen. Our Hispanic heritage is our city's heritage. Chicago has stood as a beacon of hope and opportunity for men and women from Mexico, Colombia, Puerto Rico, and across Latin America. That bond has become especially strong recently, as we have seen our Hispanic neighbors and fellow residents targeted and terrorized by the threat of raids and deportation simply for who they are. When we honor Hispanic Heritage Month, we are celebrating our city's values and legacy as a home for all people. Our value is a sanctuary city and welcoming city to all people from all walks of life, where every resident is free to learn, free to dream, and free to know who they will always be, that free to know that they will always be safe, secured, and supported. It's those values and that heritage that we celebrate this month and honor all year round, and we will stand united against hate and make sure that our immigrant and refugee communities are fully supported in Chicago. Thank you. These are the last of the resolutions. Alderman Mitchell?
Madam President, I move adoption of the foregoing resolutions in the omnibus.
No objections, so ordered.
I now move return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications?
A series of communications from or honor the mayor to the honorable the city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the city comptroller, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Section 2-3, 2-030 of the municipal code regarding authority to enter into certain intergovernmental agreements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the chief financial officer, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the closure of senior lien water revenue bonds. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a modification to previously executed redevelopment agreement and associ-
and associated loan assumption for Heartland Phoenix House LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education regarding TIP assistance for schools located in Albany Park. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing an amendment of previously executed redevelopment agreement with Primaster 119 LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Aviation, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with U.S. Customs and Border Protection at Midway International Airport. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Mercer Street Holdings III recording the provision of Neighborhood Opportunity Funds. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit with here a CDBG adjustment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Chief Procurement Officer, I transmit herewith a resolution regarding LGBT Business Enterprises. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing public hearings for renewals of various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith, together with Alderman Cardenas, a resolution regarding Chicago's commitment to renewable energy. Your favorable consideration of this resolution will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing expenditure of multifamily housing loan funds. Land write-down and the sale of city-owned property for Hope Manor Village. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing amendments to previously executed negotiated sales of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the grant of easement to ComEd at 3510-40 South Michigan Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing an acquisition of property at 4400-06 West Lawrence for the Chicago Public Library. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing expenditure of open space impact fees for Harmaby Community Garden. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Special Events, Culture Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending Title 10 of the Municipal Code regarding Harbor Operations and Permits. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith, together with Alderman O'Shea, an ordinance amending the zoning code regarding cannabis-related activities. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee of Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending the zoning code regarding siting of wireless communication facilities in parks and open space areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Redevelopment, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending Section 2-120-600 of Municipal Code regarding Landmark Commission Membership. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Maurice D. Cox as a member of Community Development Commission for a term effective immediately and expiring February 26, 2022, to succeed David Reifman, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Allison Arwadi as Commissioner of Health. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Frank J. Lindblum as member of the Chicago Emergency Telephone System Board for a term effective immediately and expiring July 1, 2024, to complete the unexpired term of Susie Park, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Salmaia Madrono Novak as member of the Human Resources Board for a term effective immediately and expiring July 19, 2024, to succeed Karen M. Copa, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Maurice Cox as Commissioner of Planning and Development. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Angela Herlock as Commissioner of the Chicago Housing Authority for a term effective immediately and expiring July 7, 2024, to succeed John T. Hooker, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council of the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects and designated as follows: Inspector General's Public Safety Section Evaluation Report regarding the Chicago Police Department's Random Review of Body-Worn Camera Recordings; Inspector General's Audit Report Regarding the Department of Streets and Sanitation's Violation of Chicago Municipal Code by Providing Free Garbage Collection to Certain Nonprofit Organizations; Inspector General Audit Report Regarding the Department of Law's Process for Notifying City Residents of Sanitation Code Violations; Inspector General's Audit Report Regarding the Department of Fleet and Facility Management Maintenance of the Chicago Police Department's Vehicle Fleet; Inspector General's Audit Report Regarding the Effectus Department of Public Health Air Pollution Inspection Program; Department of Transportation and a Report of Non-Ordinance Loading Zone Activities; Notification from Alderman Felix Cardona Jr. expressing his intent to vote yes on Resolution R. 2019-348 Regarding Women's Productive Rights; Expression of Opposition to Propose Zoning Reclassification of Property, 1300 North Maple Avenue; Expression of Opposition to Propose Zoning Reclassification of Property at 123 South Peoria Street/128 South Green Street. I City Clerk Anna Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on July 24, 2019, were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on September 18, 2019, by being fully printed in text and printed pamphlet copies of journal proceedings at City Council of the City of Chicago. I also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action: Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas Which Are Refereed to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards; Claims Against the City of Chicago Which Are Refereed to the Committee on Finance; Amendment of Municipal Code Section 3-56-050 to Extend Standard Veteran License Pilot Program to January 31, 2021, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety; An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to property at 1601 South Morgan Street-949 West 16 Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation in Public Way.
Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met September 16, 2019, item number one is the appointment of Reshma Soni as the City Comptroller. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and unless any member wishes to speak on the matter, I would like to move for passage by roll-call vote.
The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Sbarro. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Sedlowski-Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Secho Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Telfiero. Alderman Roboios. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waguesback. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Villegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spazaro. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tony. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein.
There are 47 yays and no nays. The matter is passed. Alderman Thompson, on the motion to reconsider.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no.
No.
The motion fails. Alderman Waguesback.
Madam President, item number two is a substitute ordinance to amend Municipal Code Chapters 3-56, 9-64, and 9-100 regarding wheel tax license fees, violation fines, and payment plans, also known as the Fines and Fees Reform Ordinance. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and with the exception of one dissenting vote in committee, Alderman Thompson, I move passage by the most favorable, first most favorable roll-call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number three is an ordinance to amend the program report setting forth the terms of the PACE Act, Property-Assessed Clean Energy Act, to come into compliance with amended Public Act 101-0169. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and unless any member wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
One moment. Alderman Hairston.
Yes, I wish to be recorded as voting aye on item number one of the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Alderman Waguesback. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add me to the first favorable roll-call vote of the Finance Committee as an aye vote.
Thank you, sir.
I have number four.
One moment, one moment, one moment here. On the motion to reconsider.
Move to reconsider vote.
All in favor say aye. All opposed?
No.
The motion fails. Chairman Waguesback, please continue.
Thank you. Item number four is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk, provided there is no objection. Items five through nine consist of one authorization for Ms. Accordia to engage in a tag day sale around the city, and authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city, denial of payment of various small claims against the city, and orders authorizing the payment of various condominium refuse rebate claims and senior citizen rebate sewer claims. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus. Madam President, item 10A through 10D in the supplemental consists of four orders authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute settlements in the cases of Catalin de Matrescu and Alexandra de Matrescu versus the City of Chicago, Baskins versus Patrick Gilmore, Mark Deroke, Michael Kelly versus City of Chicago, C. Jared Horton as the independent administrator of the estate of Marlon Horton, deceased, versus City of Chicago, Officer Ken Walker, Shaquilla R. Moore, and the Chicago Housing Authority, H. Russell and Company, and Maverick Security, and D. Jamare White versus City of Chicago and Officer Carlos Perona. The orders were approved by the committee by voice vote, although on 10B, there was one dissenting vote, Alderman Lopez. 10C, four dissenting votes, Alderman Napolitano, Spazaro, Gardner, Lopez. And 10D, three dissenting votes, Alderman Nick Spazaro, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Lopez. And if no one else wishes to speak on this matter or be recorded as voting no, I move passage by the first most favorable roll-call on the Committee on Finance with the exception of the, and, excuse me, and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider with the exception of the dissenting votes.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Before we move on to the next committee report, I want to address two issues that were part of the Finance Committee report. The first is to congratulate the new city comptroller, who comes very able and skilled. I'm grateful, and I appreciate all of your hard work, and we have more to do. So thank you very much. The second item is the passage of the Fines and Fees, the so-called Fines and Fees ordinance. First of all, I want to thank the city clerk for her incredible leadership and partnership on this issue. This is a very important day for residents all across the city. It's the first in a series of steps it will be taking to give people relief from the burden of fines and fees, when as part of the bankruptcy filings in this county, Cook County is the highest Chapter 13 bankruptcy filing in the country, and a huge percentage of those filings relate to debt that people owe the city of Chicago. So we are working hard to make sure that we relieve that burden, we give people their cars back, and we give it an opportunity to participate in the economy. This is an important day for our residents, and we've heard them. And again, I want to thank the clerk for her leadership and partnership. And I know. Thank you. All right, our next committee report. Alderman Irvin.
Quick question. In our committee reports, there were dissenting votes. Are we now transferring those dissenting votes in committee to council, or are those separate dissensions outside of the committee report?
Those are reflected in the recording today. I think Chairman Waguesback, with respect to finance, noted the dissenting votes and then made an exception to those in asking for the vote to be counted for the other items on the agenda.
From committee or for council or vote?
For committee. So the dissenting committee votes obviously were noted as a matter of record, and the clerk called the roll call on the first vote, as we typically do. If you'd like to be noted as a dissenting vote, we can certainly note that.
No, I'm just asking the question because the way the report was read, that those votes were counted as dissenting votes. were counted as dissenting votes and not necessarily as ayes as they were indicated in the first vote of the committee. That was the only question, that's all.
Yeah, but again, as you know, the procedure isn't we follow today. The dissenting votes are noted, we took the roll call, roll call was what it was, and then we recorded as and proceeded accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on September 9, 2019. The committee recommends the passage of the following items: two reappointments as members of the Chicago Public Library Board, Christopher P. Valenti and Jody L. Block. The third item on the agenda was a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2019 within Fund Number 925 for the Departments of Housing, Departments of Public Health, Department of Family and Support Services, the Chicago Police Department, and the Chicago Public Library. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The Committee on Aviation. Alderman O'Shea. Let's skip that and go on to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Chairman Villegas.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on September 10, 2019. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Items one through eight are a series of appointments of members of special service areas, Elena Duran and Jose Hernandez to the Little Village Commission, Nora McCarthy, Candace Kusik, Adam Williams, Sarah Dalkin, Christopher Hunt to SSA 29-2014 West Town Commission, and Stephanie Fishel to SSA Number 60 Albany Park Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chairman O'Shea, are you ready? Committee on Aviation.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the Committee on Aviation, for which a meeting was held on...
One moment, one moment, Chairman. Yes, sir.
Still have two items to report.
All right, pardon me.
Item nine is an ordinance for a Class C tax incentive for property located at 3269 to 3325 North California Avenue and 2727 West Roscoe in the 33rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 10 is an ordinance for the restructuring of loan and subordination agreement for Renaissance St. Luke LP regarding 1501 to 1515 West Belmont Avenue in the 32nd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Now, Committee on Aviation.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting of your Committee on Aviation, for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, or on Monday, September 16, 2019. The committee had two items up for consideration, first of which is an agreement lease 02019-6520, a concession lease and license agreement with All Clear LLC, doing business as Clear, a TSA certified registered traveler company, to provide travel, document checker, subscriber services at Chicago O'Hare International Airport and Chicago Midway International Airport. This item passed by the committee members present, with the exception of Alderman Hairston. The second item up for consideration was a fourth amendment to ground lease agreement with Arrow O'Hare Express LLC to expand a 515 Express Center Drive parking lot area at Chicago O'Hare International Airport. This item passed by the committee, all committee members present. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move for passage of these items by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same motion reconsider if there are no objections.
Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. While we're definitely going to probably support this Clear contract, it's a sole source contract because they're the only ones, as we totally understood, that provides this service, and I think it would be a great help to the Department of Aviation. But I must go on record, and because I cannot let this pass, that when companies come before this council and come into this city, you cannot be coming in here and not have a history of having African Americans and other minorities on your board. And especially when you're coming into a city that the majority, the minority are the majority. And so, we will be holding you to some of the commitments that you have made, but this is just not for them, this is for anyone, as they are coming before this council. It's important that you have board members and managers that are reflective of this city. And so, I just wanted to make sure that was heard. We discussed it in committee at length, but they have to know that that is critical as it relates to this council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I want to address this, I want to address my no vote in committee. The first was because we received the actual substitute ordinance two minutes before the committee met, and, which was insufficient time to actually read the 322 pages. The second reason are for the reasons that were stated by Alderman Moore, and this was not a case of first impression for this company in another state coming before them without representative MBE, WBE, or DBE affiliates with their company. This has happened before, and they have not done it. We do recognize that they are the only ones that do this type, but I would hope that we would put in place something to monitor them and to make sure, because it was their understanding, or it was my understanding, that all they thought was that MBEs, WBEs, or people of color, all they could do was construction. And so, I let them know that there are black accountants, that there are black lawyers, that there are blacks janitorial companies, and that those are the people that are here in the city and that should benefit from them being in the city. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Yes, sir.
So, I would be remiss if I...
Alderman Burnett.
I would be remiss if I did not say anything, but I was the one who sort of was just, it was just interesting to have a sole source vendor. We just wanted to make sure that we have fairness and that everyone was included. I would say that the aviation department notified us that the organization is putting forth a strong effort to include DBE, WBE, minority contractors in their biz, they getting ready to go to affair. So, I think it was good that we all were there and we caught it. I commend all of my colleagues for voicing their opinions. I commend the administration for working with us to go back to the table and make sure they do what they need to do, and also want to commend Alderman O'Shea for being willing to hold this thing off until they make a commitment to make sure they take care of all people in the City of Chicago and give everyone an opportunity to be a part of the program. So, again, it's just something that, and like my colleague said earlier, you know, this is a diverse city. Folks should think about diversity when they come to this city and do business with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Shea.
Madam President, let the record reflect on item 202019-6519. My colleague Alderman Burke abstains on that. Let the record also reflect that Alderman Burnett was very complimentary of me, and I appreciate that. If there are no objections to anything else, Madam President, I move for passage of these items by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance, with that exception of Alderman Burke and Alderman Hairston, and that concludes my report.
All right, hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Education and Child Development.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Education and Child Development, for which a meeting was held September 10, 2019. I recommend that the following reappointments do hereby pass: A2019-52, a reappointment of Karen Kent, and A2091-53, a reappointment of Darrell Williams, both as members of trustees of the Community College District Number 508. I move that these reappointments pass by the first most favorable roll call on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight.
Thank you, Madam President, members of City Council, reporting for the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a meeting on September 11, 2019. The committee considered and recommends passage of one item, an ordinance amending Chapter 2-56-110 of the Municipal Code of the City of Chicago regarding authority to release certain confidential investigatory files and reports of the Inspector General to the public. If there is no objection, I move passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, this concludes my report.
The Committee on Health and Human Relations.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Health and Human Relations, which held a meeting on September 4, 2019. Committee has a report recommending passage of one item, a resolution calling for officials and agents of U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement to cease mass deportations of immigrant families. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Alderman LaSparra.
There's no motion to reconsider, only I had an unfortunate absence for the chamber. Apologies, I would like to be counted as a yea vote. Sorry, my apologies. I would like to be counted as a yea vote on that first favorable Finance Committee vote.
Thank you. The record will be so reflected. Alderman Nugent.
I'd like to have my vote recorded as a no on 10C in the Finance supplemental.
Thank you. All right, yeah, I understand. All right. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Committee on Housing and Real Estate.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting on September 11, 2019. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item two is a sublease agreement for the use of the building space at 1111 South Western Avenue in the 28th Ward for use by the Department of Public Health. I move passage of this item on the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is an ordinance to approve the indemnification and hold harmless agreement amendments for Well Street, Wentworth Avenue Connector Project agreements with various railroads in the 25th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is an ordinance to approve property acquisition agreement for properties located within 7733-7759 West Clarence in the 41st Ward. I move passages of this item with the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items five through 11 are ordinances for the sale of city-owned property through the adjacent neighbor land acquisition program at 210 North Parkside in the 29th Ward, 626 North Christiana in the 27th Ward, 631 North Ridgeway in the 27th Ward, 6636 South Hermitage in the 15th Ward, 4347 South Shields in the 3rd Ward, 3854 West West End in the 28th Ward, 3850 West West End in the 28th Ward. I move passage of these items to the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items 12 and 13 are ordinances for city-owned property for parking spaces at 271 North Pulaski Road in the 28th Ward, 3806 South Wabash in the 3rd Ward. I move passages of this item in the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 14 through 18 are ordinances for the sale of city-owned open space property at 1846 West 63rd Street in the 15th Ward, 211 West Washington Boulevard in the 27th Ward, 5220-5242 Northwest Kinsey Street, and 5241 West Ferdinand Street in the 37th Ward, 7025 South St. Lawrence, and 7041-42 South St. Lawrence in the 6th Ward, and 1834, 1839, and 1840 West 63rd Street in the 15th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 20 is an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code, Section 4-60-50050, by further regulating prohibited acts of residential real estate developers. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 21 is a substitute ordinance amending the Municipal Code, Chapter 13-72, by adding the new section 13-72-085 concerning the sale of condominium property. I move passage of this ordinance, of this item, by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Lastly, items number one and number 19 on the agenda were held in committee, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mits.
Madam President and members of the City Council, I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on September 11, 2019 to consider the following ordinance. Ten ordinance regarding moratoriums in various wars, the first, the eighth, 21st, 32nd, 37th, 38th, 44th, and 49th Ward. Also, item number 02019-4133 was lifting subsection 4-60-022, parentheses, 27.58, parentheses, in the 28th Ward, was passed, passed the License Committee on June 26, 2019. These recommendations were concurred in by a voice vote of the members of the License Committee on September 11, 2019. Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, September 10, 2019. Before the committee, there were 382 items. There were 364 routine traffic items that passed and 18 routine traffic items that did not pass. If there is no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Talia Pharoah, Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on September 4, 2019. There were three items before the committee, for which the committee recommended passage by a voice vote. Item number one is the appointment of Matthew C. Crawl to the Police, Chicago Police Board. Item number two is the reappointment of John P. O'Malley Jr. to the Chicago Police Board. And item number three is the reappointment of Paula Wolf to the Chicago Police Board. Committee also heard a second quarter report for 2019 given by the Civilian Office of Police Accountability, to which no vote was taken. If there is no objections, I move for the passage of the appointees by the last favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception that Alderman Smith wishes to be recorded as a no vote to the reappointment of John P. O'Malley Jr. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to speak to items two and three of this report. I am in strong opposition... I am in strong opposition to their reappointment, as I stated in committee. They had numerous occasions to use their role to go beyond just adjudicating, but to actually focus on creating policy for the police department. They were part of the police board that gave no recommendations for the last two years to the City of Chicago. And I wish to join my colleague, Alderman Smith, in not only saying no to one, but saying no to both reappointments for their lost opportunities and the abdication of their duties as charged by the Municipal Code. Thank you.
Alderman, Chairman Talia Pharoah.
Madam President, I did have an opportunity as Chairman of Public Safety to speak and have personal interviews with all three appointees, including the two reappointees. I find them highly qualified for the position in which they're seeking and think they have done a tremendous board, the reappointees, on their service to the City of Chicago on the Chicago Police Board. It is my recommendation as the Chairman of Public Safety that the passage of these appointees. Thank you, Madam President.
With the exceptions noted, hearing no further objections, so ordered. Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Chairman Spazato.
Members of the City Council, before I give my report, Madam President, I want to thank you and the members of the council for appointing me to this committee. I believe it's the last committee to report it out. So, thank you, everybody, very much, and thank you, Madam President. So, reporting for your Committee on Special Events... Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Sorry. Reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, which held a meeting on Monday, September 9th, 2019, the committee recommends passage of the following three items. Item number 1, Jose Munoz as Commissioner of the Chicago Park District. Item number 2, for an expenditure for open space impact fees funds for a grant to Friends of Lakeview NFP...
Alderman Maldonado, if you could, please.
I'll start on number 2 again. It's an ordinance for an expenditure of open space impact fee funds for a grant to Friends of Lakeview NFP for reimbursement or improvement of low-line pathway from 2411 North Palina to North Ashland Avenue. Item number 3, an ordinance for an expenditure to open space impact fees for contribution to the Board of Education, Athletic, and Exterior Projects to Sal Language Academy and Friedrich L. John Feinhardt School. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Committee on Transportation. Alderman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting was held on September 9th, 2019. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. On pages 2 through 55 include 637 ordinances for grants of privilege introduced by local aldermen from wards 1 through 50. On pages 56 through 57, including 37 ordinances for canopies introduced by local aldermen from wards 3, 8, 13 through 15, 23, 25 through 27, 30, 35, 42 through 45, and 47. Pages 58 through 61 include 46 ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by local aldermen from wards 1 through 5, 16, 25 through 27, 29, 31, 32, 42 through 46, and 48. On pages 62 through 65, with the exception of 02019-5565 in the 44th Ward, will be held in committee. On pages 66, including two subdivision ordinances located in the 9th and the 10th Ward. On pages 67 include five vacation ordinances located in the 9th, 14th, 25th, and 28th Ward. On page 67 includes a dedication ordinance located in the 20th Ward. On page 67 includes a release ordinance located in the 27th Ward. The Committee on Transportation and Public Way also held a meeting on September 12th, 2019, where my able-bodied Vice Chairman presided, Michael D. Rodriguez, in which the following one ordinance was passed in record time by a majority of the members present. Page 2 includes a transportation ordinance located in the 4th Ward. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Chairman Tunny.
Madam President, and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on September 10th of 2019. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page 1 contains an amendment to the Municipal Code, Title 17, regarding plan manufacturing District Number 4, the Kinsey corridor boundaries, use table standards, and supplemental use standards. I hereby move passage of this item by the last most favorable call of the Finance Committee report and the associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 1 also contains the appointments of Zurich Esposito, Timothy Knutson, and Joel Saul as members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Also on page 1 contains the appointment of James Rudick Jr. as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I move passage of this by the same motion if there is no objection.
Can you let him finish, please? I don't believe he was finished, sir. Could you just let him finish? I don't believe he's finished, sir.
So, I'll move the same motion.
Alderman, please take your seat and let Alderman Tunny finish, and then you can stand and have your objection.
Okay.
Please, you're out of order.
Okay. So, if there's no objection, with the exception of Alderman Lopez and Alderman Moore, who would like to be recorded as voting no on this item... And I want to defer to my colleague. I think that there's a motion to defer and publish, but I'm not sure.
Please proceed.
Madam President, I have an objection to this appointment. During the committee hearing, Mr. James Rudick stated that his opinion is that the aldermen were not the voice of their community. And so, therefore, I have objection to this appointment, and me and Alderman Lopez move to defer and publish.
Alderman Lopez, is that your vote to defer and publish? The appointment will be deferred. Alderman Tunny.
Next, on page 1 also contains the appointments of Teresa Cordova, Andre Broomfeld, and Deborah Moore as members of the Chicago Plan Commission. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
All right. On pages 2 through 17 contains various map amendments in the 48th, the 47th, the 46th, the 44th, the 42nd, the 37th, the 36th, the 33rd, the 32nd, the 31st, the 30th, the 29th, 27th, 26th, 25th, 17th, 16th, 12th, 11th, 10th, 6th, 2nd, and 1st wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, again, if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages 17 and 18 contain various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 45th, the 44th, the 42nd, 41st, 38th, 35th, 32nd, 27th, 25th, 15th, 11th, 10th, 8th, 5th, 4th, 3rd, and 1st wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Moving on to page 18 contains four fee waivers for historical landmarks in the 3rd, 19th, and 43rd wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 18 also contains one demolition of a historical landmark building in the 27th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And finally, on page 18 contains historical landmark designation for the Trumbull Public School Building at 5200 North Ashland in the 40th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Agreed Calendar. Chairman Harris. Agreed Calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I received a listing from the clerk of items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and memorial resolutions offered by Alderman King, Alderman Harris, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez... Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Irving, Alderman Robores, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Silverstein, and that is it. But I do have one item, Madam President, if I have your permission.
Please proceed.
It's a... I'd like to acknowledge the Chicago City Council Resolution Honoring the Chicago Fire Department Fire Engine 21 Resolution. So, could we suspend the rules so it can be read, Madam President?
Hearing no objection. Please proceed.
Whereas, I, Alderman Michelle A. Harris, and on behalf of the residents of the 8th Ward and my fellow colleagues of the City Council of the City of Chicago, inform this august body of the accomplishments and historical significance of Chicago Fire Department Fire Engine Company 21. And whereas, on December 21st, 1872, Chicago Mayor Joseph Minnill established Fire Engine Company 21, which was located at 47th Elbridge Court and became the first paid African-American fire company in the United States. And whereas, the initial members were George Adams, Willie Hawkins, James Johnson, Stephanie Prine, Henry Prybridge, James E. Porter, George Reed, and William Watkins. And whereas, five years later, in 1877, David Kenyon, captain of Engine 21, invented a wooden sliding pole. Following this invention, Engine 21 became Chicago's leader in total fire runs, work time, and most miles traveled. It also improved the response times of fire engine companies across the nation. And whereas, Had Bond, descendant of Enos Bond, Chicago's oldest African-American family, who settled in Chicago in 1866, became a firefighter after serving in World War I. On May 30th, 1936, while responding to a fire alarm, Had Bond was killed in a traffic accident. And whereas, the accomplishments of Engine 21 are chronicled in a recently released book entitled, Black Heroes of Fire, written by former Chicago Fire Battalion Chief DeKalb Walcott Jr., who served in the department for 31 years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, do hereby express our appreciation and acknowledgement of Fire Engine Company 21. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be prepared and presented to Mr. DeKalb Walcott Jr., a descendant of the original eight members of Engine 21.
Alderman Harris.
Today, I'd like to acknowledge this group of descendants, and I'm waiting for Mr. Walcott to come around so he could be... Raise your hand so we could acknowledge you who wrote the book about Black Heroes of Fire, who's educating me on the accomplishments of African-American firemen across the City of Chicago, who's keeping me abreast of everything that the Chicago firefighters do for people of color. I wanted today commend you for putting yourself and pouring yourself into the book, but also getting people, involving everybody in writing this history of this great Fire Engine 21, and just say thank you for your commitment to African-American firefighters.
Chairman Harris, is there a motion on the agreed calendar?
And can I have a motion on the agreed calendar to move the passage of the agreed calendar?
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. New business. The clerk will call the wards beginning at the 1st.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Dowell, Alderman Smith, and Alderman Riley have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-53, concerning powers and duties of City Council Office of Financial Analysis, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Dowell, Alderman Smith, and Alderman Riley also have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-53, the further regulated requirements of the City Council Office of Financial Analysis, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Beal has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West 103rd Street. This is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Beal also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West 103rd Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Sedlowski Garza has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signs and signboards at 126th and South Torrance Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Cardenas and Alderman Martin have proposed ordinance to call for estimates of total of TIF contractual obligations and city surplus funds, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Quinn has proposed ordinance for designation of the 35th precinct of the 13th Ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Curtis has proposed ordinance to call for establishment of a pilot program, parking program, to allow vehicles to park in Parkway and 3500 block of West 83rd Place and 3600 block of West 83rd Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Taylor has proposed resolution to call for development of system requiring wealthy nonprofit organizations to make payments in lieu of taxes to the City of Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Rodriguez has a proposed resolution to call for all government agencies affiliated with juvenile justice to review policies and recommendations with juvenile justice to review policies and recommendations of Convention on Rights of Child and Global Study on Children Delivered to Liberty, which is referred, deprived of liberty, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Rodriguez also has a proposed resolution for support of a Class 6B tax incentive for the property at 4207 West Ogden Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Scott has a proposed ordinance for dedication of the public ways in the area bounded by West 18th Place, South Kildare Avenue, West 19th Street, and South Costner Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Scott also has a proposed ordinance for execution of a partial assignment, assumption, and amendment agreement for sale and redevelopment of land located in 1200 block of South Sawyer Avenue and South Kinzie Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Secho Lopez has a proposed ordinance opening public areas, in, opening public ways in the area bounded by West Harrison Street, South Wall Street, and the south branch of the Chicago River, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Telefiero and Alderman Scott have a proposed resolution to call for hearings concerning Chicago Police Department's failure to respond to Inspector General's recommendations to improve school student resource officer program, which is referred to a joint committee on the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Education. Alderman Revoyes has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary John Novy Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Cardona and others have opposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 3-12-050 and 7-28-235, concerning senior citizen exemptions for sewer service charges and city refuse collection fees, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Wagasback has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 17-9-0112, concerning separation requirements of personal service establishments, which is referred We have a correction. A matter presented by Alderman Scott for proposed ordinance for the execution of partial assignment, assumption, and amendment agreement for the sale, redevelopment of land located at 1200 block of South Sawyer Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Housing. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title III, by adding a new Chapter 3-20 entitled, Chicago Employer's Expense Tax, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Irving Park Road, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Viejas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Addison Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Viejas also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of an ordinance which requires obtaining, predicting, required approval for Belmont-Cistro Plan Development, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Viejas and Alderman Irvin have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title I, by adding a new Chapter 1-25 concerning rules and regulations issued by city departments, agencies, and offices impacting public at large, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Nugent has a proposed ordinance for correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of June 12th, 2019, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Napolitano has proposed orders, order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 7435 West Talcott Road, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapters 17-10 and 17-17, by adding new sections 17-10-1011 and 17-17-0251, concerning electric vehicles and electric vehicle supply equipment, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for vacation of South Canal Street between West Jackson Boulevard and West Van Buren Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Tony has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Martin has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Wilson Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Martin also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-130, to further regulate hours of operation for sale of alcoholic liquor and packaged goods in supermarkets, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Martin and others have a proposed resolution calling for hearings on reducing Chicago Police Department's overtime, background checks of police board attendees, and gun violence reduction efforts, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Martin and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-84, by adding a new Section 2-84-501 and a new Section 2-84-502 to regulate gang designations, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Osterman has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Sheridan Road, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Haddon has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Silverstein has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Hopkins has a proposed resolution honoring Washington Square Park, Bug House Square debates, and recognizing open exchange of ideas and free speech, which is referred Which is referred to the Committee on Rules. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 3-24, concerning Chicago Hotel Accommodation Tax, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman King has a proposed order for the issuance of permit for a signed signboard at 4646 South Drexel Boulevard, which is referred to Committee on Zoning. Alderman Sawyer has a proposed ordinance for vacation of public streets in the area bounded by South Yale Avenue, West 76th Street, South Perry Avenue, and West 77th Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Maldonado, and Alderman Viejas have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 2-92-329, concerning contracts for workforce intermediary programs, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Telefiero, and Alderman Osterman have opposed ordinance for amendment of an ordinance which established the Mayor's Office of Gun Violence Prevention, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Sawyer and Alderman Haddon have a proposed resolution to call for hearings on defunding preschool programs provided by community-based organizations, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Thompson has a proposed order, has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Beal, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Kapelman have opposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapters 3-4, 3-49, 4-64, and 7-32, concerning tobacco retailers, and repealing Chapter 3-47 in its entirety, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations.
Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam President. Considering the gravity of the ordinance that was just referenced, I'd like to move for the temporary suspension of the rules to, for immediate consideration of the ordinance as provided, of calling for the total ban of vaping e-cigarettes and all associated items.
Alderman, your motion to call this, this item for an immediate vote is out of order. The matter is not on the agenda for today's meeting, and taking final action on this item would violate the State Open Meetings Act, which requires items to be published in an agenda at least 48 hours before the meeting. In addition, our rules require that any report on an ordinance come from a committee unless there has been a properly noticed motion to discharge, and there is no such motion with respect to your ordinance. Accordingly, I'm ruling your motion out of order.
I would appeal the decision to the body then, because I believe that, as we've done so often with resolutions and everything else, for a temporary suspension of our rules, we can proceed, and I would ask the body to have weight on that.
As you are well aware, this is not the same as a resolution, that I've made a ruling that your motion is out of order for the two reasons that I stated, violation of the Open Meetings Act, and failure to present this to a committee on which there was due consideration in a vote.
Refer to the License Committee?
Pardon me, I didn't catch it.
I will amend my ordinance to our license to have it then.
It'll be referred to, to License and Committee.
The matter will be referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection.
Alderman Riley?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure if you heard, but I had called for Finance, and I think when two committees are called, it would go to Rules.
Pardon me, I, I did not hear that, and you're 100% correct. This matter will be referred to the Rules Committee.
Thank you, Madam.
Please proceed.
Alderman Lopez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapters 3-4, 349, 4-64, and 732, concerning tobacco retailers, and repealing Chapter 3-47 in its entirety, Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman O'Shea and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 2-14-074, concerning notice of violations, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Maldonado and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapters 2-45, by adding a new Section 2-45-160, entitled Pilot Act for the Preservation of Affordable Housing in 606 Residential Area, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 1-8, concerning commemoration of Indigenous people, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Viejas has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Titles 4, 7, 8, 9, and 17, to further regulate cannabis organizations, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has a proposed ordinance for public way easement agreement for 160 Grand, East Grand Avenue Associates LLC, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Martin has a proposed ordinance for approval of plat of Walcott at Ravenswood Subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Osterman has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 9-12-045, by modifying shared street program on portions of West Argyle Street, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Osterman and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title V, by adding new Chapter, a new Chapter 5-25, entitled Senior Housing Ordinance, Which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Lopez has a proposed order to withhold distribution of 2019 Fund, 925 Funds previously appropriated to the Department of Public Health, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Beal has a proposed ordinance for. Regarding the Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act and Tax Increment Financing, which is referred to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Tony and others have a proposed resolution. To call on Governor Pritzker, Senate President Colleton, and House Speaker Madigan. To work with seniors and persons with disabilities and family caregiving workforce and senior service providers, which is referred to the Committee on Human Relations. Alderman Sawyer and others have a proposed resolution calling for establishment of Chicago Descendants of Enslaved African Reparations Commission, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Wagasback has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 16-18, regarding open, open space impact fees, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Lopez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Section 7-12-060, regarding redemption of impounded animals, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Wagasback and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 10-28, regarding signs prohibited on the public way, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez and Alderman Napolitano have proposed ordinance for amendment of various sections of the municipal code. Regarding animal care and control, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Alderman Lopez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 4-156, regarding amusement taxes, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Napolitano has a proposed ordinance for a Class 6B tax incentive, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development.
Are you done? Okay. Alderman Mitchell. For approval of the Journal.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal, and move that be approved.
All those in favor approving the Journal is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any, any miscellaneous business.
Alderman Mitchell, the date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up the ordinance to the Clerk stating the date and time of the next
He's got to say, did you say the next meeting is September 18th?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Alderman Mitchell has an ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago for Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, at 10 o'clock a.m. in the City Council Chamber and City Hall.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is passed. Roll call on the omnibus?
Alderman Lasparra, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Sedlowski Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Secho Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Telefiero, Alderman Revoyes, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Viejas, Alderman Mits, Alderman Spazato, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tony, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman,
On the omnibus, there are 50 ayes and no nays. The matter in the omnibus was surpassed. Alderman Thompson?
Motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion fails. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There are no further business before the body. I move we stand adjourned.
All those in favor, the motion to adjourn signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Counsel is adjourned.